Questions that I have heard raised here this evening, both on the part of community residents and board members. First of all, we should understand that schools should be the institutions which undergird and facilitate community stability. However, in the case of Project 10-351, at the site of Pomeroy Road and Erie Street Southeast, there is a mounting concern that this school will become a disruptive influence in the community by causing young children to have to walk long distances to attend a school far from their home base and ultimately away from parental control and supervision, as would be the case for children residing in the large Marlboro Plaza apartment complex on Good Hope Road Southeast, who would be required, as we have been told, to attend the new school. However, our school system has been unresponsive to the concerns expressed by many citizens in this community regarding the Pomeroy Road and Erie Street site since 1971. In the information prepared by and distributed over the signature of the school superintendent, it was indicated that community had not made any protest against the school until May 9th, 1973, when I, in fact, addressed the board at the Hart Junior High School and raised this question there. Since the ... additional information on page two concerns itself with the report of the city council, and Mr. Anderson has testified to that, I would like to go to the bottom of the page and direct your attention to a meeting held between Mr. Granville Woodson and Mr. James Banks in June 1970. The discussion concerned itself with the district government's assessment of Project 10-351. And at this meeting, Mr. Banks, representing the mayor's office in his role as special assistant on housing affairs, expressed concern regarding the potential for the increase of population density in the immediate area of Pomeroy Road and Erie Street site, which would be encouraged and facilitated by the construction of the proposed school. Mr. Banks' expert opinion was that, and I quote, "It would not be in the district's best interest for this project to continue." Mr. Woodson, in a subsequent memorandum to Mr. -- I'm sorry, to Colonel Storobin, dated -- again, I call your attention to the date, not 1973, 1970, June 29th, 1970. Mr. Woodson did advise Colonel Storobin that he was considering, and had so advised his staff, the continuation of the project on the original site. And here we have to assume that Mr. Woodson was speaking of the original site selected in Fort Stanton Park, fronting on Good Hope Road, when the project was initiated in 1966. Colonel Storobin's reply, dated July 1st, 1970, informed Mr. Woodson that he, Colonel Storobin, had directed -- and you notice the difference between the language. Mr. Woodson advises, Colonel Storobin directs, his staff to go ahead on the present site. And here we are assuming that the site referred to is the one now under discussion at Pomeroy and Erie. Again, it is important to emphasize that community has been speaking for some time on this matter, and that on September 14th, 1972, following a meeting of SAC4, at which time citizens did review the CIP proposal, Mr. Charles Tally, then chairman of SAC4, addressed a communique to Mr. Marion Barry. Apparently, the relationship is a cordial one; he addressed him as Dear Marion. He informed him at this time of the increased community concern regarding the size and site of Project 10-351. Further, Mr. Tally advised Mr. Barry that the citizens group would be continuing their review of the CIP program at the Washington Highlands Library, and requested of Mr. Barry appropriate people from the administrative staff, as well as Mr. Barry himself, should his schedule allow, to attend this meeting in order that they might respond authoritatively to citizens' concerns and questions. Now, I'd like to call your attention to the 1973 Senate hearings before the Committee on District of Columbia Appropriations fiscal year 1974, at which time considerable testimony was given in response to direct questions by Senator Birch Bay. The respondent for the D.C. Public School System was Mr. William J. Bedford, acting deputy superintendent for Management Services, D.C. Public Schools. The senator asked, "What is the public school position on the appropriate size for elementary, junior high, and senior high schools?" Mr. Bedford's response was, and I quote, "Elementary schools, 500 to 600; secondary schools, 1,000 to 1,500." Additional information was solicited on the efforts on the part of the school system to respond to the needs of schoolchildren east of the Anacostia River. And again, I quote from Mr. Bedford, when the question was put to him about overcrowding in Anacostia, "Completion," and I quote, "completion of the Wheeler and Savannah Elementary School, the Oxon Run Junior High School, and Anacostia Senior High Schools will eliminate overcrowding at all," and I underscore "all," school levels east of the Anacostia River," end quote. For the benefit of our school superintendent, Mrs. Barbara Sizemore, and board members who are not yet familiar with our community, only the Anacostia High School serves the children of the Pomeroy Road and Erie Street site; the other two schools will serve children in the Congress Heights community. I would now like to direct your attention to the National Capital Planning Commission and its evaluation of the project that we are now considering. In as early as 1967, the National Capital Planning Commission proposed the expansion of schools, then experiencing severe overcrowding, and projected the need for 17 new neighborhood schools at the elementary level by 1974. I submit that the key word here is "neighborhood." In correspondence addressed to Mr. Sam D. Storobin, dated May 8th, 1973, and I would like to emphasize that date because it was one day before I addressed the board at Hart, copies were sent to Mr. Woodson and Mr. Robert Gresham, District Planning Division, signed by Charles H. Conrad, executive director of National Capital Planning Commission, with specific reference being made to the Project 10-351, as well as their noted deficiencies in the design of the school building. This information may be derived from the material I have given to you, and its title "The Report of the District Public Improvements Committee," dated May 3rd, 1973. Since the audience does not have that material, I would like to conclude by saying that the committee approved the modified sites, boundary, and final site and building plans for the new elementary school at Pomeroy Road and Erie Street Southeast, but it did so with certain provisions, and there were two. One, that the District of Columbia government and the Board of Education, as soon as feasible, reduced the program total enrollment of the school from 1,326 to approximately 900 pupils. And the second condition was that expand the proposed school site by incorporating the 1.1 acres of land between the modified site boundaries and Erie Street to the north. A copy of the full committee report was sent to Mr. Woodson. Under the heading of "Environmental Impact," the committee notes that, quote, "the deficiency in available play space for the students at this proposed elementary school would have an adverse impact on the 1,326 children that would be crowded on this site," and that is a direct quote. The coordinating committee reviewed the project on April 24th, 1973, and forwarded the following observations to the commission: One, the committee reiterates its concern over the extreme deficiency in open space; and, two, the project has been presented without the benefit of design relationships to the neighboring Moton Elementary School. Finally, under "Project Evaluation," the committee cites the following objections to Project 10-351, and they are as follows: The proposed school with only 58 square feet of open play space per child would be severely deficient in open space under the final site and building plans. Two, because of the extensive building coverage and the lost space due to the topography, only approximately 1.8 acres, including paved plaza areas, would be available for recreation uses and for 1,326 children in the school. The committee noted that, and I quote, "The other approved new schools provide for 104 square feet to 354 square feet of open space per child," end quote. Further, it notes that a minimum of 150 square feet per play space per child has been recommended to the Board of Education, and it continued, "The board took no action." The committee recommends that the expansion of the site, and I'm quoting, "to the northeast could potentially add as much as 1.1 acres of land to the site by incorporating the remaining land in the block between the school site and Erie Street into the site boundaries," end quote. Further, the committee notes that, and I'm quoting, "The site should be expanded to provide a larger play area, and the programmed enrollment should be reduced to reach a much better balance between the number of students and the amount of usable play space." Finally, and this document has been quoted from tonight, but it was not in entirety, and I think it's only fair to you that you hear all that was in the Washington's Far Southeast Seventy report transmitted to Walter Washington, in fact, by Mr. James Banks. It was specifically recommended that the city, quote, "construct more schools of appropriate size on adequate sites," end quote. The report notes that in, and I'm quoting again, "In Far Southeast, there is a real danger that a rush to build and catch up rapidly may lead to substandard schools. Since school buildings are normally used for at least 50 years, inferior schools could become 50-year mistakes, as the overly large elementary schools on undersized sites threaten to become," end quote. The educators, including the National Education Association, have spoken to the appropriate size for elementary schools, and they recommend 300 to 50 to 500 to avoid problems of being either too large or too small. It is apparent, then, that the schools now under construction or planned for the Anacostia community do not meet the guidelines or standards of the National Capital Planning Commission, the National Education Association, nor do they adhere to the stated policies of this Board of Education." Again quoting from the Far Southeast Seventy report, and the quote says, "That Far Southeast -- and that there is a danger that Far Southeast has become the testing ground for another experiment with expanded elementary schools," end quote. Citing the newly constructed and then planned for Malcolm X Elementary School as an example, the report notes that this school, then a plan to day a reality, a three-story school for 1,326 students, and that, according to all the reports we reviewed, seems to be the magical number for Anacostia, that these students are now housed on a two-and-a-half-acre site at Alabama Avenue and Congress Street Southeast. The building they complain covers most of the site, leaving only a minimal play space and a parking space shortage. This site, we are told, was originally intended for a school holding about 800 students, but pressures to immediately respond to the concern of overcrowding forced the plan sized up. The demonstrated attitude of our municipal government toward this community, in the absence of a consistent and continuing lobbying effort by Anacostia residents, seems to suggest that anything and everything will be placed in our community and accepted by our people. It would seem that the decision to build such large elementary schools should be made only after careful study of the probable educational effects and of the ability of both school administrators and the community to control so concentrated a student body. Finally, in 1967, the Passau Report described the D.C. Public School System as, and I quote, "a reacting school system rather than an initiating one, insofar as innovation, long-range planning, and program development are concerned." However, Washington, D.C., has had an elected Board of Education since January 1968. Unlike the appointed board, it is to be hoped that since representation is now derived from the people, that you who represent us and the interest of our children will listen to and respond to citizens' concerns and will be cognizant of your responsibility and commitment to the children, your most important constituency. Unlike special interest groups, children have no paid lobbyists, no unions, or professional organizations who will protect their interests or seek redress for their grievances. They must rely on all of us, parents, teachers, and administrators and board members alike, to be their advocates.
Thank you, Mrs. Hutchinson. Are there any questions? Mr. Cassell, Mrs. Hutchinson, if you would.
Yeah, Mrs. Hutchinson. I think you raised some serious deficiencies regarding the construction of this school as designed on this particular site. Okay, I'm sorry. I think you raised some serious deficiencies, or you pointed to some serious deficiencies regarding the design of this particular school on this particular site. And one of the interesting things is that apparently representatives or a representative of our school system made a commitment to the United States Congress in the '73 Senate hearings, indicating that indeed elementary schools, according to our standards, or at least that person's opinion, should be no larger than 500 to 600, and secondary schools should be no larger than 1,000 to 1,500. And then there was a further commitment made that upon the completion of three specific schools, that all the school levels east of Anacostia would -- or all of these schools would, or the overcrowding problem would be eliminated. And then you've pointed out, from the report of the District Public Improvements Committee, other deficiencies, and these deficiencies were asked to be corrected by various bodies. And we were requested that we do reduce this school from 1,326 to 900. And something else that hasn't been mentioned here, I guess Mr. Anderson mentioned it, that there is a gross inadequacy of play space for this school, whereas there's only 58 square feet per student, as opposed to 104 to some 354 average in other schools. Now, it seems to me that a case has been made for some attention to be given to this. What specifically is your recommendation to the board?
Well, Mr. Cassell, I have no specific recommendation. I have asked, respectfully so, that the board, because I felt it was the board's responsibility to avail itself of expert advice, I felt that as a citizen I had the responsibility to bring the matter to your attention. We are concerned about the appropriateness of the size of the site, the size of the school that we feel would best suit the needs of this community. I think that the experts have spoken; the city council has made some recommendations to the board; the Senate has raised questions in its hearings; the National Capital Planning Commission has spoken; the Congress of PTAs has spoken; D.C. Citizens for Public Education has spoken. And I would not suppose that I'm any more learned or enlightened than they are. I think out of the hearing, and out of the vast testimony that you're going to hear and have heard, and other recommendations that have been made, that hopefully some alternatives would emerge and surface, and that the board in its wisdom would detect those and would make a recommendation or a decision based on all of these findings.
I don't think that citizens have to make the recommendations for alternatives themselves, but since that question has been asked before, how would you have a start addressing this issue and facing some alternative?
Well, one of the things that we would like to see is a reduction in the pupil enrollment. A question that bothers us is how this magical figure, 1,326, is so conveniently applied to all the schools and now under consideration either for actual construction or proposals. We don't know whether this is a rated projection or whether this is going to be actual classroom space; we don't know the variables used in arriving at those figures. We would hope that in the planning processes, that the board would have that information. But we are concerned about a reduction of enrollment for all the reasons that Mr. Anderson and others have stated. There has been some thought given to perhaps some alteration to the interior of the structure once it is constructed. It needs to be stated because I felt very -- I felt particularly when the questionnaire, and I think you know the questionnaire of which I speak, came into the community through the school, came from Mrs. McKenzie's office or over her signature. It seemed to suggest that the burden for any loss of money, time, or anything else was going to be borne by the community. And I think that that's not an equitable share of responsibility. I think that the board had an opportunity and had a responsibility in response to the several requests to review this long before now, and certainly long before the contract was signed in July. We -- perhaps there can be some accommodation of alternatives to the interior design of the building. Perhaps, as Mr. Anderson and others have suggested, a library facility is certainly needed in that specific community. I guess if we talked longer, we could think of other things that could be done there. We don't want to see the site lost. Now, initially, and I have to make this as a point of clarification, I was diametrically opposed to that site. I am no longer opposed to the site. I was opposed to the site because on it stood two buildings that we were trying very desperately to save, which were some reflection of the history of black people in Anacostia. That battle was lost, and the sites were razed, so that I'm no longer opposing the site. But I am expressing serious concerns about now what will take place on that site.
Do you have any reaction to Mr. Pierceall's suggestion that you have a variety of badly needed community activities borne by the city government housed in this particular building?
That's really, quite frankly, that is a consideration that had not entered my mind, and I haven't really had an opportunity to give serious thought to it. It is a possibility.
Thank you.
Mrs. Chairman? I thought Mrs. Mason is next, followed by Father Campbell.
I'd like to ask Mrs. Hutchinson the same question I've been asking other people. I am very concerned about what happens in the process of resolving this problem. And I have heard many different feelings and opinions about it. And while we're trying to build a school that speaks to community, we want to maintain the community feeling in the community. And I would like to know if you have any ideas how we could develop a process to involve the community, the board, and the administration in resolving the problem. And let me say to you again, like I've said to other people, that I say that in the context of community decision-making, I don't think the board should make a decision separate and apart from the community.
Well, one of the things that I see this issue doing is making it possible for the area board to become a vehicle in problem-solving and educational needs in this community. And so if there were going to be such a meeting, as you suggest, between administration, between board, and community, I would think that most properly, there would be some involvement of the area board and of the several local boards, and that that would be a representation that has been elected by the people of their various neighborhoods to be concerned about educational matters. I think, however, that there are apparently, from the reports that we have been studying, there are some other people that would need to be involved. There certainly is a very able chairman of the Educational Youth Affairs Committee of the City Council. The council has said some things, perhaps we would like to involve them. Apparently, the National Capital Planning Commission has a role to play in this, and I think that certainly they should be included in any dialogue. But that it now affords everyone the opportunity of exploring what the possibilities are and hopefully, in a cooperative fashion, arriving at an equitable solution.
If I may pursue, maybe you are familiar with the Tacoma school problem.
Yes.
And after the construction was stopped, then there was a, what they called, a charrette, which is a planning process which was carried on for a full week with full community participation, working with all kinds of experts, end quotes, to help, you know, resolve that problem. And I wondered, we don't have to have a charrette that will last a week, but I wondered if maybe we should just leave that hanging, that maybe the community would want to get into a re-evaluation planning process to resolve the problem and to build that community feeling, you know, so that we have a community, when we have the school, we'll still have a community. All right?
That's a possibility.
Right. Thank you. And I'd like to ask a question of the administration, and I guess this would be of Mr. Bedford or somebody. What happened to the provisions that are cited here on page four, that the construction would go on with these two provisions, that the enrollment would be lowered, and that the size of the land would be increased? And that, to me, means that you don't build a school unless those two provisions are taken care of?
So I'm sorry, Mrs. Mason, that question was directed to the...
To anybody who can answer it.
You're reading from her letter, and I have just heard what I could while she was reading. I don't have a copy of the letter.
Mr. Bedford, if, you know, if anybody can answer it, I'd be happy. And if nobody can answer tonight, that's a question that...
What was your question?
In finalizing the action to construct a school, what happened with those two provisions that the community built into their recommendation? Numbers one and two at the bottom of page four. That enrollment be not more than 900, and that the land site be expanded to 1.1 acres.
Mr. Cox?
Does that mean now, Mr. Cox, that we have adequate play space for that school? Now, may I ask Mr. Cox another question?
Yes, Mrs. Mason, yes.
If we were to get into a reassessment of this problem and decided to stop the construction, and then after stopping it, decided that we would need more play space and a smaller building, is it past the point where we could make a decision like that?
As a point where we can make a deal?
What does that mean, Mr. Cox?
That means if a change is made in the scope of this work, if the use of this project would be delayed, and the cost would be anybody's guess, because you would have to deal with the contractor, have to go back and redesign, and I can imagine at this point just what the cost would be.
But at the point where we are now in the construction, with whatever concrete has been poured, is it too late to have it smaller so that the placement -- play space would be larger? Is the question I'm asking. Is it too late for that?
Yes.
I see. Step one?
Can I pursue that?
Yes, all right.
I would just...
Mrs. Mason has a floor. Have further questions, Mrs. Mason?
I just have one comment, and that is that with the Tacoma, with the Tacoma stoppage, there was a very long delay in picking up on that project. And I believe the project was stopped in '68, and Tacoma is now just being planned. And so the community would have to know that when you stop it, and I'm not saying this because I'm in opposition to stopping it, but I think the community should have information. And if it is stopped, it means that you will have to wait and go through a process again, and we don't know, none of us would know, how the Congress would deal with, you know, with that problem.
Chairman? Let's see, Father... Let's see, Father Kemp was next, and I recognize Mr. Cassell is speaking after Father Kemp. The superintendent wishes to make statements.
Are you?
Mrs. Mason, we would have to do the study on the acquisition of extra land space in order to determine whether or not the play space could be secured according to the specifications Ms. Hutchinson cited. However, just for the information of the board and the community, I would like to make some observations about studies done on the relation of school size to achievement and discipline. The studies are not conclusive. There are as many studies which indicate that large schools affect school achievement adversely as there are studies which say that large school size have no effect on school achievement. If you recall the heyday of desegregation, you remember the many proposals for magnet schools and educational parks which were designed for school populations as high as 5,000 in order to desegregate. If you recall the specifications and the studies and research done for these sites, there was conclusive evidence, I'm sorry, there was not conclusive evidence which reflected that the size of the school would affect achievement either way. However, other studies seem to show that a high school of less than 1,000 is not an effective situation because it is difficult to offer the variety of courses and curriculum that are necessary for what we have come to term, an adequate high school education. In the elementary school, if you have a primary school, it seems that the size of that school should be somewhere between 500 and 750. But this is not conclusive either. However, if you have a school from preschool, say, through 12, or through grade 10, or through 9, the size of the school should be somewhere between 900 and 1,000. Now, it depends on what you have in mind for your children in this area. And I was struck by the last statement in Ms. Hutchinson's remarks, which say that the Passau Report tended to describe the Washington Public Schools as reactive rather than initiative. And it seems to me that, taking Mr. Pierceall's remarks as a vantage point, we might consider using the Garnet C. Wilkinson as a new model school for a K-12 system in the Anacostia school area, where you could very well have 1,000 students in the school if the age span is from preschool through 21. Now, the other important remark that was made here this evening, which struck me as innovative, was combining services in there for the students. And I think that many of the ideas that have been given here tonight will need to be researched, and we'll have to study them in order to find out what really is the best service that this school can give to this community, especially with considering innovation.
Yes. Mrs. Hutchinson, I want to commend you for an excellent piece of testimony. I think that I, just for sake of brevity, since it is running late, just like to comment on one point that you raised and Mr. Pierceall raised, and that is the whole question of these capacities. Your figure in Anacostia is 1326, and you're dead right in feeling and in raising objections to the board that all these monster schools are being built this side of the Anacostia River. I would like to share with you two experiences on the other side of the Anacostia River, one at the Bruce Monroe and one at the New Morgan, which is under construction. Those figures somehow magically got in the neighborhood of 1,250. In the Bruce Monroe, this fall, there are some 800 students. The citizens refused the offer to transfer boundaries to make the Meyer Elementary School less than its slightly overcrowded operation now. As a result, there are 450 less students in that school than the capacity figures would indicate. In other words, by fiat of that community, that capacity has been lowered to something operable, manageable, and in terms of play space, it's bound to be one of the smaller playgrounds for a number of pupils. In terms of the Morgan, the Morgan is built as, really almost as a community facility school, with a junior high school-sized gym and indoor swimming pool in conjunction with the recreation department. Those kinds of facilities are being put together in that building through a cooperative venture between the Morgan Board, the D.C. Board, and the recreation department. That board, the Morgan Community School Board, which has a lot of the same dynamics present as the Anacostia Board, is currently talking in terms of not more than 800 in that particular new facility, even though the capacity is 1,250. Nobody is disturbed about that. They're just not going to let more than 800 people in that school. And I think you ought to know those two precedents exist. Further, the Morgan Community School Board has currently under study a proposal that sounds a little bit like what's going on at the John Eton, and that is to retain their sixth graders, or some of their sixth graders, into a seventh grade, and then into an eighth, and perhaps into a ninth, and to reorganize that school in terms of lower school, middle school. Number of these possibilities, I think, ought to be explored in the process that you indicated with the Anacostia Community School Board and with this community. And I think even further, that in terms of redesigning the building, the Palmeroy and Erie Building, perhaps it might be worthwhile to look at the complementary, supplementary, community, those kinds of services, going into more traditional buildings, perhaps like the Moton, where you wouldn't have to make so many adjustments within the building. Classrooms make fairly good offices. And maybe we could think in terms of using some of those facilities for that kind of office, medical clinics, social service kinds of workers, libraries, and what have you. And I think that all these things really have to be explored, but I'm very encouraged by the, not only by the testimony that you gave, but by a lot that we've heard tonight in terms of the fact that you just have not had the opportunity to look at smaller schools operating, because what you've been getting are these much, much larger schools. And I certainly envision us over the next six months, 12 months, working very closely together to develop exactly what would be in that building, and working with this constellation of schools that we're hearing about in these reports to figure out where things would go best in what buildings. And I just offer those few suggestions for your consideration and for the consideration of the Anacostia Board.
Mrs. Chairman?
Mrs. Mason?
I'd like to add the Tacoma School to your list, where they're talking about adding on the junior high school. They're talking about that, too. And I was at Morgan at the time when we planned that school and decided if we couldn't fight the GSA by lowering the enrollment, the size of the school, that we would add on those junior high grades. I'd like to also say that I have just come to realize that if the enrollment is lowered, we'd naturally have more play space. All right?
Mrs. Chairman?
Mr. Barry?
I'm sorry, now, I beg pardon. Mr. Cassell was to be recognized next. Mr. Cassell?
Yeah, I'd just like to be clear as to the stage of construction of the building at Palmeroy and Erie. I talked to a gentleman from the D.C. Department of Buildings and Grounds. He indicates that while there is excavation at that site, that there has been no concrete poured. And of course, once you begin to pour concrete, then you begin to define the building, and it becomes more expensive to change the design. But if the Board of Education decides that the testimony that it's heard warrants at least a temporary delay while we try to resolve this issue, that there is no permanent, unless something's been poured today, and he didn't know about it, there is no permanent construction there. As a matter of fact, the stage of construction there would be no further than that of the Tacoma project, which had had its footings excavated for, but which still could be modified without any extreme costs. I point out also that the response that you would get from the people who normally prosecute contracts is certainly a very cautious one, and they're normally execute contracts. And they, of course, are very much concerned about something that we are less concerned about, and that is the possibility of some additional cost to the D.C. government, and the possibility of suits. But I think we all know that all contractors stand ready to receive the next contract and the next contract, and that the district government has the ability to negotiate with any contractor without necessarily incurring any large suit for damages. And we, as a Board of Education, I think should be more concerned with the testimony that's been brought to us today about the quality of the facility itself, and allow the district government and the Board of Education, too, to take care of the details, as we are quite capable of doing when we want to.
Right, next is Mr. Barry.
Mr. Chairman, I wanted to ask probably the administration some technical questions. As you know, at our meeting on the 14th of...
Before you do that, I had one or two questions for Mrs. Hutchinson, if you were moving to something else.
Well, similar to what had been said earlier about modification, design, and multiple use, and other kinds of things, but I'll yield to you if you want to answer some questions.
Well, I just didn't want to leave the speaker if we were moving on to something else.
It was in that same thing.
Okay. Mr. Barry?
Well, my question is a technical question. As you know, on the 14th, three of us voted to try to stop the construction. We were defeated. My question is that, a technical question, what happens, say, tomorrow morning in terms of the site? And if it takes 75 to 100 days to redesign, it wasn't a bid on a specified set of drawings for a specified kind of work that the contractor got? I'm trying to figure out how we move on this, if we are inclined to take advantage of these innovative and creative suggestions from a technical point of view. Can anybody answer that? Mr. Cox?
The question before, assuming we were together of scaling down the school to a smaller population, we were together on multiple use of either that school or schools in the complex, my question is, what happens tomorrow in terms of what's proceeding now? Do they proceed to construct what they were originally contracted to construct, or can we stop them from doing that and ask for a redesign submissions or what? I'm trying to ask technical questions, see where we go.
the school. Yes. That would cost money and time. Okay.
Mrs. Hutchinson, I had one or two questions. The first, I think, has been anticipated and part by the superintendent, and that is that in your documentation, well, in your presentation, you refer to comments by the D.C. City Council on the capital outlay program and the FY74 budget. And I note that their comments refer to certain studies, but do not list those studies. It's not to say that you should have them or should have presented them here, but in your research at the City Council, were any studies made available to you which are the subject of reference in their commentary?
No, Reverend Cussey, we were able to get a report of the D.C. City Council's review of that FY74 budget. And I can certainly sympathize with how Mrs. Seismar felt at the last meeting of the board, when she said that she had one week to present that report on November the 14th. We had approximately 10 days as community people, as laypeople, to try to do some research, but we didn't have a staff, and there's some answers that we're still looking for.
One final question in the air of research. Did you consult with the operational people, such as teachers and local building administrators? And if you did, what were your findings with respect to the school?
We did. We talked with principals, we've talked with teachers, we've talked with counselors. One of the interesting things that we encountered in their response was that the oversized schools tends to depersonalize both the student-teacher relationship and the relationship that exists between administrators and faculties, and that in fact, much of the communication that goes on in those large schools that have PA systems is done by that mechanism over the PA, so that there is some concern about what is happening to communication within the school community itself, inside of a structure, the size of a Hayden-Johnson or the size of a Moton. These are the schools we've talked to people in.
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Hutchinson. Now, next speaker is Mr. Alton Jones.
Chairman, members of the board, Superintendent Seismar, after sitting here on his testimony. As a chairman, members of the board, Superintendent Seismar, after sitting here, here on his testimony, I sound as though I'm an expert in education, though I'm not. But I do sound like, I feel as though I'm a sort of a paraprofessional, because I am a past member of PTA, three children, my own who came through this school, in Douglas Junior High School some years ago. And in the same year, I became a grandfather twice. So it appears that I'm going to have children right on through these same schools in the future. So you see that I'm very much concerned personally, as well as my concern about the community and those of us who join here as neighbors. I didn't mention that I'm a member of the Fort Standin City Association, have been for a number of years, chairman of Anacostia Neighborhood Museum Board, and I'm not speaking for that board, I'm speaking as a citizen in this community and neighbor. I recall some years ago, when Douglas Junior High School was first built, I've forgotten what the number was, people were crying about two years later, when an addition had to be made that it was going to be too big. I haven't heard of any serious riots down at Douglas Junior High School, because it had a very strong principal there, and good morale and high discipline, well-controlled discipline. Now, what little I know about economics tells me, and all private enterprises, all well-organized agencies, organizations follow this principle, that wherever you increase your products, you reduce your costs. And that's a pretty well-established principle. And as a principle, unfortunately, social workers and educators don't always follow. Happened to be a social worker, and we are derelict in that area. We just spend money without counting the units. We've been accused of that very seriously, and we are now having to tighten that belt. And I can say that the field of education, from what I read and what I hear from my friends who are experts in it, that we do spend too much money in education without considering the unit cost. And I think we will have to come to grips with that. And that's one reason I'm here tonight, because I feel that we need to give very careful attention to the economics involved in education. If we're going to talk about quality, we've got to talk about production, too. I'm not talking about producing robots, but talking about producing human beings of quality that have come out of the world and wise use of dollars. And if I were... And if I were to read my testimony here based on research we did, I would be repeating much of what Superintendent Sizemore has already cited to you a few minutes ago. As a matter of fact, she stole my speech. I had it done last night and again tonight, so I'm starting to get used to that. And so, but I will cite, as much as I can recall, the Dr. Gore, president of Educated Facilities Laboratories, is taken from the United States News Report of a couple, a few years ago, not too long ago, that the country was looking around three or four or five years ago on the same subject, and it was found throughout the country. And this is one reason I'm glad I found this research, because it takes us out of a provincial cycle that we saw often here in Washington given to, looking at Washington, Alexandria, and Montgomery County. But this report looks at the whole nation, it looks at Florida, Minneapolis, and a couple other cities and areas, and they all bear the fact, number one, as a matter of fact, in one county in Florida, they've gone so far as to combine the elementary school, junior high school, and a junior college, and it worked out very well in terms of the teacher control and student discipline. In Minneapolis, they combined the elementary school and junior high school on an experimental basis, and last report showed it is succeeding. The National Educational Association pointed out, not very long ago, there's no, as Superintendent pointed out, there's no evidence that a large size has anything to do or there's any necessary relationship to the effectiveness of a school program. You know, I'm always interested in this, my little bit of interest in psychology. You know, when you go in a crowd of people in a school stadium, or in a large school auditorium, or walk down on that street, you don't have any problems, you know? The problem is when you get out in a scattered area and somebody can peep around the corner when there's nobody watching them. So size has something to do in terms of control. Psychologically, size almost controls itself in a sense, because there is a close identity, contrary to what's been said that there's not identity, there's identity. People have more, youngsters have more sense about relating to each other than we give them credit for, unfortunately. They do relate, they develop various group interests, which is very healthy. And in this sense, it's what we call, I think sociologists call, a sense of identity and a sense of, the term I guess is of homogeneity. They develop themselves. And last, I would like to conclude a statement that I did not necessarily read, but developed out in terms of experience and some interest in the administration. That is, where you have a high level of administration, and when I say high level, I mean a level of competent administration and a deep-seated commitment on the part of the teachers and principal and staff, you have a minimum of problems, of discipline, and you have a high level of morale, and this is basic, not only to the school system, it's basic to all systems where human beings are involved. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. We hear now from Mrs. Thomasina Francis. Mrs. Francis?
To Mrs. Sizemore, Mr. President, acting chairman, board members, other district officials, and community residents in attendance, I think all has been said. The board knows my position. I oppose the school in its present proposal, in its present form. I, as chairman of the Moton Local Board, support Mr. Albert Pierceall's position on the size of the school, enrollment, approximately 500 youngsters, as well as former councilman Sandy Anderson, Mrs. Hutchinson, and Mr. John Smith. There is one thing that I have not heard anyone comment on and still raises a question in my mind. I am concerned about the boundary changes. Mrs. Mason has asked for a meeting with the community. We would also like to extend an invitation to Mrs. Sizemore and Representative Coats to attend that meeting also. We appreciate the position taken by Mrs. Sizemore and Father Kemp, that we explore constructive alternative uses of the existing space, both at the new Wilkinson School and surrounding facilities. I would like to say thanks again for having this public hearing and listening to some of the community, because in the past, I was chairman of the Committee of Twenty-One. And as chairman of the Committee of Twenty-One, at that time, you know I supported the school. But doing research and going among the community, among organizations, and businesses in this area, I found so many people not aware of the school going up at Palmeroy and Erie. I brought this attention to the Board of Education, asked them to review this site and the size of the school. I'd like to say thanks very much for this opportunity.
Thank you, Mrs. Francis. Our next speaker is Mrs. Teresa Jones, who's the last scheduled speaker.
My name is Teresa Howell Jones. I'm a mother of seven children, one of whom is a student in this area. I'm a member of the Anacostia Congestates Community, and I lived in the Woodland Development when the school was first, when the idea of this school was first conceived, not being a part of the Fort Stanton Civic Association and not being extended that privilege because I was a resident of public housing. I'd like to talk about what I feel about an oversized school. I heard the educators and the board member talk about what was not conclusive, but we have not looked at the terrain of the area. We have not looked at what small children will have to suffer to get from Marlborough Plaza to a school on this hill. My first suggestion to this board is that you walk on a cold day, and I'm not saying rainy, but you could try that, too, from the foot of Martin Luther King Avenue up Morris Road to the Moton School. I suggest that you walk from Stanton Dwellings, where our children walked, to the Moton School. I remember Father Murphy saying, and I'm telling this for the benefit of Father Kemp, he said, "If you live in Anacostia, you do your penance before you get to church." And I believed him. I still do. The school proposed with all the amenities as the Garnet C. Wilkinson School is surely needed in Anacostia, but not at the expense of children. Large and intimidating buildings don't speak to quality education. In Anacostia, our building will be staffed by teachers who are highly paid, but who don't dispense quality education. As a mother who must, in the next three years, take a small child named Juliana Jones by the hand and enroll her in a building where the peer pressure is so frightening to both she and I, I wonder what you're going to think about that when she doesn't become, say, a productive citizen. I ask that you review the facts, listen to the citizens, and make proper decisions. I believe that the facts put before you by other speakers have given you the prime reason to reevaluate your reasons for wanting the Garnet C. Wilkinson School. I wonder in my mind, when we talk about the boundaries, how many of you have, how many of you actually know where Marlborough Plaza is, or where Stanton Dwellings is, or where Woodland Terrace is, or what hardships those children are going to have to get to this school. I also wonder in my mind, and I asked Mr. Cox if he knew the area, he said, "Oh, yes, he knows the area, let's look at an air map." I wanted to know if he knew the area by foot. That's the way we get around. No sidewalks, no policemen, nothing else. We just walk in the streets or in the roads, or however we're going to get up that hill to that school. The other part of all of this that bothers me is that the board seems to be afraid of Mr. Natchez. I'm not saying it, but that's where the fear lies. Now, I heard Mr. Anderson say that we were prepared to go see Mr. Natchez, and you ought to believe that, because when the budget was being cut, Mr. Barry had us called all hours of the night, and we went to see the congressmen then and the senators. And we were prepared to do that when we prepared to see Mr. Natchez. And I see no reason why reasonable people could not ask, well, I don't know if Mr. Natchez is reasonable or not, but I'll say that, the reasonable Mr. Natchez to come out here and walk the area. And I'm sure he would enjoy the publicity from even being asked. Now, I think that we have to look at what's going on in Anacostia, and we have to look at the precedent you're being set, that's being set. Large and intimidating buildings that are not designed in any beauty, as far as I can see, and I know that beauty is in the eye of the beholder, but so is ugly. These buildings are being designed, they're heavy-looking, and all the other kinds of things that are going on. The Malcolm X School was labeled a 50-year mistake. Mr. Coats knows, we had to fight about why turn the building around in that position. We had to fight with Mr. Woodson about why he wouldn't buy three apartment buildings so there would be proper space. We have a school going up at Savannah and Wheeler, right next to another very large school, right next to a lot of townhouses that are being built, that are going to flood the apartments on the south side of the hill. We haven't taken any of those things into consideration. The boundary changes are not just going to hurt the people on the hill or the Fort Stanton Civic Association. It's going to hurt the people as far away as the Marlborough Plaza area, as far away as the Green Elementary area. Turner School may be relieved of overcrowding, but the hardship that would be placed on those children who, at some points, come underfed, underclothed, and a whole bunch of other things, to that school are going to be hurt. You're not going to be hurt. The children who are your constituents are going to be hurt. And I dare say that some of the people who are saying, "Build that school," because of the fear tactic that has been used in this community, "If we don't get the school, we're going to get low-income housing." There's nothing wrong with low-income housing, one thing. Number two, if you get that school and it needs to be filled up, low-income housing will find a way to come, so it'll fill that school up. Now, I suggest that we get the facts, we look at them before we make any decision about a school being built on that hill. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Jones. That exhausts the list of scheduled speakers.